Meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, October 23rd. I apologize for the late start. We have Commissioner Jones joining us on Teams, I believe. Yes, and we have Commissioner Madeira present here in the Netanyahu Hill Room. And I'm Commissioner Thomas. I'm here. And with that, we will begin with our public statement, please.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to a proclamation for Youth Hope Month regarding youth homelessness, outreach prevention, and education. Whereas the future well-being of our nation is dependent on the value we place on our young people, and the prevalence of runaway and homelessness among youth is staggering, with studies suggesting that every year 4.2 million people ages 13 to 25 endure some form of homelessness. Runaway youth are often expelled from their home, have experienced trauma, struggle to meet basic needs, and are at an increased danger of falling into high-risk situations, including human trafficking, and may be ineligible or unable to access adequate medical or mental health resources. Whereas the Youth Service Bureau of Monroe County is working to raise awareness, support, and resources for young people in the community. Effective programs supporting runaway youth and assisting youth and their families in providing safe and stable homes succeed because of partnerships created among families, youth-based advocacy organizations, community-based human service agencies, law enforcement schools, faith-based organizations, and businesses. If all of us work together, we can prevent the situations that compel youth to run away from home and encourage all residents to appreciate the role that we can all play in advocating for and providing safe alternatives to this vulnerable population of young people. Whereas the National Runaway Safe Line is honoring November as Youth Hope Month to raise awareness of the issues facing runaway and homeless youth, to educate the public about solutions and the role they can play in ending youth homelessness. Now therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as Youth Hope Month in Monroe County. And that is proclaimed today, this 23rd day of October 2025. Thank you all so much. We do have the proclamations. Ms. Ridge? I don't know if you want to say anything.
Hi, I'm Sarah Jamison with the Youth Service Bureau of Monroe County. I'm the public program coordinator. And I'm here to also introduce Jade Passwaiter. She is our new Safe Place Manager.
Ah, welcome.
And she's been doing an awesome job and super excited about National Hope Month. And we just really appreciate you working with us. And we're looking forward to the courthouse lighting up green in November. We'll have signs up, and we'll have social media posts too about different ways to raise awareness.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on. Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Extra work, sorry. Thank you. And we will now move on to department updates. I believe we have Ms. Kelly joining us from the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. According to the Indiana Department of Health Dashboard, as of October 21st, emergency department visits for COVID-like illness have decreased and wastewater concentrations have decreased slightly. Flu activity across the state is still minimal. RSV is a common respiratory virus that usually causes mild cold-like symptoms but can be serious in infants and older adults. Vaccination can prevent illness caused by RSV, and it is approved for pregnant individuals 32 to 36 weeks of pregnancy, infants eight months or younger if not protected by a maternal vaccine, and adults 60 and older. The Public Health Clinic does have vaccines available. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Madeira?
No, thank you.
I don't have any either. Thank you so much. Does any other department have an update for us? Can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium.
Hi, Martha Miller, Monroe County Solon Water. I'm not on the actual agenda. I was going to do a public comment, but I'll just do it real quick here. I want to just express a thank you to the Commissioners and all of my fellow coworkers throughout, as we are in a strange time for governmental practices. And we are temporarily housed at 501 North Morton in a conference room. And I just want to truly just say thank you. We have been welcomed. We have had massive support from all of our other departments around us, and it's just a good feeling. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Displaced, but still with us, working hard. Thank you. All right. Any other departments have an update for us? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment. This is for items that are not on our agenda. We ask commenters to limit their time to three minutes per person, and please share your name and county of residence. There will be a timer on the screen, TSD, if you would please. Thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Chris Geremji from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, or this morning, I don't even know what date it is. I'm going to have my Success School hat. Our foundation arm, our feel-good arm of the Chamber, is having its career cruised two weeks from today. That's November 6th. I know that's Commissioner time. But we're inviting all of the county departments to take part in it. This is our third annual version of this, where we bring in all seventh and eighth graders, not all either seventh or eighth graders, from all of the RBB, MCCSC schools. And they go to each port in the Monroe Convention Center and with their passport, get stamped, and learn about different wonderful careers right here in our county. The Sheriff's Office was there last year, and it is a lot of fun. And I'm encouraging departments to set sail with us November 6th. Look for an email from me or one of my fine fellows at the Chamber. You can also chamberbloomington.org. It's on our events calendar. You can sign up there. If you have any questions for me, we'd love to see you. It's 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on November 6th. That's at Monroe Convention Center. Let's see you two weeks from today. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other public comment for items not on our agenda? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to the next agenda item, please.
I would like to move approval of the minutes for October 9th, 2025.
I will second that. Anybody have comments, corrections, or edits? No? Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for October 9th, 2025?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones may be having technical issues.
I believe she is. Oh, dear.
Yes.
Motion at 2 to 0 with one technical problem.
Hopefully Commissioner Jones can log back in to join us. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, please.
I would like to move approval of the claims docket for accounts payable for October 23rd, 2025, and for payroll for October 17th, 2025.
Thank you so much. Good morning. Tell us all about it, please.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for October 23rd, 2025 totals $11,262,064 and 74 cents. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for October 17th, 2025 totals $1,579,540 and 45 cents in direct costs, and the remaining $683,308 and 46 cents were for indirect costs for a grant total of $2,286,605 and 66 cents.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I have none. Thank you.
I don't see that Commissioner Jones is back. I don't have any either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Since Commissioner Jones is not back online yet, I'll go ahead and call the question on the approval of the claims docket. All those in favor of the claims docket accounts payable October 23rd and payroll October 17, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2 to 0. I will note for the record that we have received a report from the Treasurer for September of 2025. And with that, we will go ahead and move on to new business, please.
I would like to move approval for the Town of Elletsville MOU for the High Tech Crimes Unit. Fund name, High Tech Crimes Unit, fund number 9159, in the amount of $285,000.
I will second that. Ms. Hamlin is joining us via Teams.
Hello, Commissioners. Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Thank you.
Great. This is a request for approval and signature on an MOA between the Town of Elletsville and our High Tech Crimes Unit. Elletsville Police Department now houses our High Tech Crime Unit. This has been a very successful partnership. Several months ago, you signed the agreement, the grant agreement, that brings the funding from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council to the High Tech Crime Unit. And this is just an agreement between the Town of Elletsville and the county to house the project there.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
No, I just think it's really cool that we have this here. I'm delighted that we have this available as a resource, and I really enjoy funding it, so.
Yeah, it's a great project. Thank you for bringing this forward. Is there any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All those in favor of approving the Town of Elletsville MOA for High Tech Crimes Unit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2 to 0.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for the ratification of the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute Grant for Major Crash Investigation Team. Fund name, number to be determined. Grant amount $43,900.
I will second that. We did hear this at our work session. Oh, it looks like we got Jones back. Excellent. We did hear this at our work session two weeks ago. I don't know that anyone is here to present on it, but I was given instructions for signing this via DocuSign, but was told that I can't sign it until the auditor signs it. And I haven't received it back yet. So hopefully that will get done. All right. Do you have any comments or questions on this?
No. Again, I just think that it's a wonderful resource, and again, an essential resource, in fact, so.
Yeah, it's a great thing to have. Commissioner Jones, did you have any comments or questions?
No, I don't. But I'm not going to be able to vote on it because my camera is refusing to work.
Oh, dear. Okay. All right, well, thank you. I'm glad you're here.
Yes, I'll stick around. Maybe it will come on.
Thank you. All right. Any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All those in favor of ratifying the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute Grant for Major Crash Investigation Team, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 2 to 0. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for Reed &amp; Sons Construction Karst Athletic Complex Contract Number 2, Change Order Number 5. Fund names Parks Nonreverting and County General. Fund numbers 1178, 1179, and 1,000, in an amount not to exceed $49,370.58.
All right, I will second that. Good morning, Mr. Robertson.
Good morning. Okay, so, Change Order Number 5 to Contract Number 2 of the Karst Athletic Complex Project. Essentially, this is a modification to the electrical plans that will ultimately service Field Number 12, which is in the northwest corner of the park, also why it's on Contract Number 2. And to make a long story short, so I don't get too far into the weeds here, some of the electrical components that are located at the north side are not suitable for Duke Energy to connect their service. So we have to move those components from the north end of the facility to the south end, which ultimately Duke will install two transformers and connect their service on the south end. So, simple enough, just quite a bit of material and labor involved there, which is what we see in the cost. I also wanted to point out, and it was mentioned, but since there are a lot of different funding mechanisms with this project, the Park Board did approve using our nonreverting funds for this expense. So it's not a request for additional funds just to proceed with the change order, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much. That was a question I'd sent on email. Thank you for that. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, just happy this is moving forward.
Agreed.
Yeah. Commissioner Madeira?
Nope, just sounds like one of those things that we have to go through in order to complete the project.
I would say it's shocking, but that would be the thing to say.
It's for our interest.
The cost is shocking. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Reed &amp; Sons Construction Karst Athletic Complex Contract Number 2, Change Order Number 5, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2 to 0. Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for Section 4F Temporary Occupancy Letter Approval.
I will second that. Mr. Cockrell and/or Ms. Ridge?
I'm born happy to talk about this. I learned about Section 4F. Essentially, what Section 4F is, is whenever we're doing a federally funded project that's going to impact a park or park-like setting, they want to make sure that any intrusion on that is minor and will be replaced at the end of time. And since you own the Karst, or the limestone greenway there, and this project is going to have to affect a little bit of it, I think they're going to raise it a little bit and repave about 40 square feet or something, so relatively minor. This just indicates that they worked a alternative route during that less than 90-day period of that construction activity, and that you guys are aware of it, are okay with that. And this is the Dillman Bridge replacement project that we're talking about. So when they replace the Dillman Bridge, there's going to be a minor alteration to the route for the limestone greenway. But at the end of the day, it will be put back into place in as good or better condition than what it is right now.
Yeah, great. Did you have anything to add, Ms. Ridge? No? Okay. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
Nope, delighted that the access will be there.
Absolutely. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
I'm just happy to see some progress with this.
Sure, I agree. Thanks, everyone, for working on this important project. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Section 4F Temporary Occupancy Letter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2 to 0. All right. Next item, please.
I'd like to move approval for American Structure Point Incorporated Agreement for the Fullerton Pike FEMA Flood Plane As-Built and Modeling. Fund names cumulative capital and county general. Fund numbers 1138 and 1,000, in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
I will second that. Director Nestor Allen from our Planning Department. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. And also, we have Lisa Ridge to fill us in, and then Tammy Beerman's also online, our floodplain administrator. So this is a proposal for a contract with American Structure Point. Lisa and Paul Satterley with the Highway Department have been incremental in helping us get together with American Structure Point and look over a contract that's at a not-to-exceed amount of $50,000. Basically, what this contract helps us to do is to get the necessary data associated with the completion of Fullerton Pike. We need some hydrology modeling, which is not just typical as-builts of the bridge. So it went over the FEMA floodplain, and we need better maps now that the bridge is in. That will help us in the future if people want to put in new structures surrounding the bridge, to know whether they need flood insurance or move it, or whether it can proceed. So we're working with the Commissioner's Office. Angie's been very helpful. So we're looking to have $44,000 potentially under cumulative capital. And then we've moved $6,000 just from our general fund, from our unused budget from this year, to hopefully encumber and have for next year under this contract if approved by you and the council.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for working on the funding issue. That's always something that's important. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Madeira?
No, I have none.
Ms. Ridge or Ms. Beerman, do you have anything you want to add? Nothing?
That I know of, I know this is a new requirement over the last couple of years. It goes with the Clomar permit and the Lomar permit to have a letter of map revision through FEMA. So we're just been following all the necessary requirements to be in compliance with that.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you so much.
I think the timeline is early 2026 would be the timeline for the contract completion.
Thank you so much. Oh, and Commissioner Jones is back online and on camera. Yay! All right. Okay, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, since we have Commissioner Jones back on camera, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. All right. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for N.DOT Change Order Number 2 for the Bicentennial Pathway. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in the amount of $480,001.8.
We skipped one. Let's go ahead and do that. That's okay. Let's go ahead and do that's Item G. We'll go ahead and do that one. And we'll turn to Ms. Ridge.
So we are in the process of trying to get everything closed out for this project. It takes a while. So this is a change order, actually, to begin that process. So it's a negative $481,001.8. So that's how much the project came in under construction cost. When it's said and done, and everything is finalized and audited, Monroe County should receive 20% of that amount back because we pay a 20% local match. So this is just actually trying to finalize this project. And as you can see, it's two years after construction, so it takes a while.
It does, it does. And so the county cumulative capital fund, thank goodness, will eventually be getting back $96,021. Yeah. Thank you. Comment, thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
None.
Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
It's just always nice to get money back rather than sending it out.
It's a nice change. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on N.DOT Change Order Number 2 for the Bicentennial Pathway?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
All right, thank you so much. Now we'll go back to Item F, please.
Yes, I'd like to move approval for the second item that said American Structure Point Incorporated Agreement for Construction Inspection Services for Roar Road Bridge Number 75. Fund name, cumulative bridge, fund number 1135, in an amount not to exceed $47,901.31.
Right, I will second that. Thank you so much. Ms. Ridge?
So this contract is for part-time construction inspection services. We expect construction to go after April 1st. The project was awarded to CLR Contractors this past fall. And I don't think there's anything else to add. This is just a locally funded project. There's no federal aid dollars. There's no match. So just wanted to throw that out there. This will be completely on Monroe County and local funds.
Yeah, yeah. Can you provide a little info about where the Roar Road Bridge is?
Yeah, it is by Sar Road, just west of that intersection.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. All right. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Madeira?
No, thank you.
All right, I don't either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on American Structure Point Inc. Agreement for Construction Inspection Services, Roar Road Bridge Number 75?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. All right. Let's move on to Item H, please.
I would like to move approval for Ordinance 2025-38, Petra PUD Outline Plan Amendment 1.
I will second that. Oh, Mr. Sean Smith from Planning is online. Please tell us all about it.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to share my screen here and start the show. All right, so this is concerning... So this is concerning the Petra PUD outline plan amendment one. This concerns 129.79 plus or minus acre parcel, and this is located in the northern part of the county in Washington Township, section 19, at 1392 West Didymore Road. It does, or it is close to the border between Washington Township and Bean Blossom Township. So I will continue through here. So the request here is to amend that outline plan, specifically conditions number two and number three. And this would allow for up to 30,000 square feet of developed area and for the existing driveway and parking areas to remain paved. So this came to us in the form of a proposed 1,688 square foot addition. That is to be added to the existing facility. I'm told it will be an extension of their library. So just some background on this request. So the Board of Commissioners ordinance number 2001-30, condition number two, had stated that the total developed area for this development shall be limited to 15,000 square feet. So for this request, the petitioner is seeking to increase that from 15,000 to 30,000, and that would allow them enough room for the expansion of their existing facility, but also room to grow in the future should the current property owners or a future property owner decide to go through with that addition. However, just for right now, the petitioners don't have any current plans to expand beyond this proposed addition. And just some background on the zoning, what the petitioner is proposing is for 30,000 square feet of developed area, whereas if it were its underlying zoning district, the Forest Residential 5, they could be allowed to have up to 55,000 square feet. So what the petitioner is, you know, hoping to request here is that, because they're requesting a less square footage limitation, that that might be approved. And then condition number three, which states that the driveway and parking areas shall be gravel, that the petitioners are seeking to just strike that condition entirely, and we'll talk more about that as the presentation goes on. So this PUD was approved by the Board of Commissioners on June 1, 2001, and the purpose was for the development of a research facility for the nonprofit organization known as Friends of Craft. So that's Center for Research into the Anthropological Foundations of Technology. For the public's reference, this facility is otherwise known as the Stone Age Institute. So the purpose of this research facility is not only to conduct research, but they also do prepare publications, as well as house their large private library. And you'll note as part of this request, it is to extend or add on to their vast collection in their research library. So did want to make some brief points here. So while the facility does collaborate with Indiana University, it is not owned by the university. So they are completely autonomous. It's privately funded. And the original PUD plans did offer the possibility of the directors living on-site, however, well, through the development of a residence on-site, however, the directors did opt to purchase an adjacent property, and that is actually currently where the directors live. So there are no future plans for that, at least right now. And the underlying zoning district at the time was Forest Reserve, which was under the prior 1997 zoning ordinance, which did not allow for a research facility use. So that is why the current property owners had sought a rezone to what we call planned unit development, or a PUD for short, and that allowed them the freedom to develop this research facility. So I have on the screen here highlighted the two original conditions of approval under the original outline plan. So the two highlighted are the problem areas. So the first one being that the total developed area is limited to 15,000 square feet, and the third one being that the driveway and parking areas shall be gravel. On the screen here, I just have a snippet of what the original ordinance kind of looked like, so at least as of June 1, 2001. The main point, the main takeaway from this is just that the research facility was not a permitted use. But with the original PUD approval, all the uses you see on the screen would be allowed to be developed in this area in addition to the research facility if the property owners or a future owner saw fit. So some discussion into the driveway and parking areas. So as I previously stated, the driveway and parking areas were supposed to remain gravel. At some point between 2005 and 2010, the owners did opt to pave over the driveway and parking areas. So in 2005, on the screen, the bottom of the screen, you can kind of see there's, it looks like there might be some paving starting or had just begun, but by 2010, it was very pronounced. And then 2024, which would be the latest aerial imagery that we have, you can definitely see that it looks like there was some repaving. So this would otherwise be a direct violation of the PUD ordinance, which is why the petitioners are here in hopes to have that condition removed from the overall outline plan. And then on the screen before you is just a zoning map. So you'll see that in gray represents the petition site. So it is unique in its area, but the area overall is incredibly rural in nature. And then on the screen here is just a brief snippet of the petitioner's proposed development plans. Here they have the location of the drive, so it is a fairly long drive, but I think that was intentional because you cannot actually see the facility from the roadway itself. But on the screen here just represents the extent of the driveway and parking areas that they would prefer to keep paved if the commissioners vote on that today. And then the second page here provides a little more detail in regards to their proposed addition. So their proposed addition is located, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor here, but it is on the south side of the building here, noted by this rectangle. So the proposed addition is 1,688 square feet. So if they were to build that today, it would put them at approximately 15,860 square feet, which would be greater than the 15,000 square foot threshold that was approved under the original 2001 ordinance. And then they did go ahead and label an auxiliary garage building parking lot, and just added some dates of when the pavement had occurred. They do have an existing septic system that was installed on the property, and the original plans did note some, at the time, it was called a sinkhole conservancy area. So those have been labeled on the plot as well. The Stormwater Program Manager did not foresee an issue with their proposed addition with regards to impacting those sinkholes. And then on the screen are just some site photos that I took during my site visit to the facility. I mentioned previously, you cannot see the facility from the roadway, so the images on top would be reflective of that statement. And then they do have a three, looks like a three-car garage on the property, and then the main facility shown on the bottom right-hand side of the screen. And then the top two images here, you'll notice that the area has been staked out. So they did that so we, it could help, you know, show the commissioners exactly the extent of the structure that's going in, so it does not appear to otherwise have any adverse environmental impacts or anything like that. These are the construction plans that the petitioner submitted along with their request. So the main takeaway is that they do appear to be staying with the architectural style And planning staff is supportive of this petition. They did recommend a positive recommendation to the county commissioners based on the fact, or I should say conditioned, on the fact that the uses shall be limited to the Friends of Craft research facility or a research facility of a similar nature, and uses permitted in the forest reserve zone in the agricultural residential uses subcategories of table 2-1, which was that table I showed earlier, permitted land uses from ordinance 1997-36, number two, that the total developed area shall be limited to 30,000 square feet, and three, that this petition shall comply with the requirements of the Monroe County Highway and Drainage Engineer Reports. At their September 25, 2025 meeting, the Monroe County Plan Commission did vote six to zero to four of a positive recommendation to the county commissioners with those three conditions outlined in the staff report. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. Great work. Very clearly explained. Appreciate that. Let's see if there's any comments or questions for you, Mr. Smith. Commissioner Jones?
No. Well, I really don't have any problem with the paving rather than the gravel, since it's my understanding that once gravel has been driven on a bit, it really is not that much different than paving. And in general, I'm very supportive of this. Do you know if it's ever open to the public, or is this entirely a private research?
I do not know for sure if it is open to the public. I will state that it is gated. So you do have to, I had to ring in when I arrived, but I'm sure the petitioner or the petitioner's representatives who's here, I believe online, would be able to answer that.
Thank you.
All right. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
No, I think it was very thoroughly explained, and I have no further questions.
Great. So we do have Ms. Kropinski online. I believe petitioners are also here in the NatU Hill Room. And so if you'd like to offer an answer to Commissioner Jones's question, but also anything you wish to present or clarify, we would welcome you to do so at this point. You will have to unmute Ms. Kropinski. Your hands raised. We see you. There you are.
Thank you very much. I see Nick has made it to the podium, so perhaps I should let him speak. I could not see that on screen.
Morning. My name's Nick Listoth, and my wife, Kathy Schick, were the co-founders and co-directors of the Stone Age Institute. And as I understand it, by zoning, we're not open to the public, but by special invitation. So we've hosted hundreds of visitors, both university and Bloomington community, over the last 20 years.
Thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to add about this project, either Mr. Toth, Ms. Kropinski?
And most of our research is done in East Africa and the Republic of Georgia, some of the earliest Stone Age sites in the world. But the reason for this expansion, we've already inherited one of our Berkeley professors' libraries, and we're about to inherit our other Berkeley professor's library, which is 6,000 books and 100,000 reprints. So we will have compactors in this facility to store these things, and we will have the best library in the world for what we do.
Wow. Impressive. Impressive. All right. Does anybody else wish to speak in favor of this petition? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? You may raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium here in the NatU Hill Room. Okay. See? Back to the board for any last comments or questions. Anything come up? Commissioner Madeira?
Nope, I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Now, this is an impressive research facility, and I'm grateful that you're here in Monroe County. I'm not typically a fan of, when projects are, have gone through a PUD process, and the owner slash operator makes a decision to make a change without coming before us. That's related specifically to the gravel slash paving of the driveway. It's, I know there's a belief out there, it's just better to do it and ask forgiveness than to ask permission. But in the future, you know, like you did with this building, please ask permission. We're a reasonable bunch. That's okay. That's okay. It's been a long time since the original PUD was created, and that can be forgotten as to what all of the conditions are. So I don't, I don't claim any intentionality in your action, but I am glad you came here, and it's really wonderful to hear that you have such a great expansion of your collection. That is so impressive. Thank you for that, being good stewards and caretakers of this vital resource. And there are three conditions that are attached to this relating to the use, the limitation of 30,000 square feet total developed area, but on 29 acres, 29-plus acres, that's not terrible, and following the requirements of Monroe County Highway and the Drainage Engineer Reports. So those are part of this motion, just for the record. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2025-38?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Kropinski. Good to see you. All right. I don't have a ton of items here, but I would just remind the public that the Board of Commissioners does have office hours throughout the month, every month, six times a month. Just go to the calendar on our website and take a look and join us for a conversation. Had a great conversation Tuesday. That was, that was good. So while you're there, recommend that you sign up for the resident alert notification system where you can be contacted via text, email, and/or phone. And also a reminder that we do have board and commission appointments that will be coming up, and as our website continues to be updated, don't worry about looking at how many members are expiring, members tasked with, are expiring, and all that. Just if you're interested, please apply. That's all I can tell you. The next blood drives that we're cosponsoring- blood drives that we're cosponsoring with Ivy Tech and the Red Cross, Wednesday, November 12, 2025, 10:00 AM to 3:00. Thursday, November 13, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And again, this is at Ivy Tech, 200 Daniels Way, Room C130A and B. Please go to redcross.org to make an appointment. Anything else for the good order?
Just a quick note that on November 13, from 8 to 4, we're going to have the Monroe County Childhood Condition Summit in the Monroe Convention Center. That's also always a wonderful event to attend.
Yeah, it is really good. Great. Thank you so much. Anything, Commissioner Jones, to add?
No, I don't.
All right. Well, we do have, our next meeting is October 30, right here in the NatU Hill Room at 10:00 AM. But we do have a work session agenda. Can we come back at 11:15 for that work session? Is that okay with everyone? All right. All right. Good. Well, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be well.